...twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. And as is our customer, begin our meeting with notice.
Whatever I brought to the plate.
To the flag of the United States of America, I consider your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have our agenda before you. Are there any changes or modifications to either the consent agenda or the regular agenda?
Before us this evening, we have two pages of changes to the minutes. One is page ten of the eleven minutes. One is page seven for the minutes. Just now consulting with the mayor, I think it may best, sorry, to strike the revisions I suggested to the first portion on page ten. First highlighted portion, leave the second highlighted portion.
Of the total call?
Yes. And then leave page seven for January eighth as written.
We decided that that first section on page ten was...
Any more clear?
Oh, okay. All right.
So, let's strike that. And I would make a motion to approve the consent, but I do have a question on item three. If we can do that quickly, just, I know we were told at one of our meetings, we had February, till February one, spend that you need monies, and, you know, this is saying that if you just want to reimburse the town, that we got a new agreement, they agreed to that.
They said that we can go longer, yeah.
Great.
Okay. We just have to let them know.
Thank you. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
Second. Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Pamela Volker, those in favor please indicate by an eye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries in. Is there a motion now to go into public hearing? For this?
Second.
Moved by Beth Wilson Foley, seconded by Michael Fiocco, those in favor please indicate by an eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries in. Victoria Bailey will lead up in a text amendment request for accessory dwelling units.
Turn it on. This is zoning text amendment ETA two zero one seven dash zero four. Randy Voller and Lance Lee Landis have requested an amendment to the table of uses in the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance. Currently, accessory dwelling units are required to obtain a special use permit in the RA, RA two, RA five, R-ten, R-twelve, R-twelve M, and O-N-I zoning districts. The zoning ordinance defines an accessory dwelling unit as a dwelling unit that exists either as part of or a principal, either as part of a principal dwelling or as an accessory building, and is secondary and incidental to the use of property as a single-family residential. The applicants have requested a text amendment to allow accessory dwelling units to be permitted by right in zoning districts RA, RA two, RA five, R-ten, R-twelve, R-twelve M, R- fifteen, and O-N-I. Staff recommends that following the public hearing, there are questions pending for the recommendation. Are there any questions? The applicants are here, if you have any questions.
There is no one's gone deaf for the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this issue who'd be glad to sign up outside? Then we will... Randy Voller?
I don't wish to speak unless you want to ask a question.
Are there questions, Beth Moore and Randy Voller, who proposed this particular text amendment?
How does that work on procedure in a public hearing? Dialogue like that? Is it straightforward and acceptable?
Mr. Mason?
Well, the public hearings, for your benefit, to see if any members of the public have a comment on it, Mr. Voller's the applicant, he can comment on it if he would like. So, I don't know what... If you all don't have any questions, so the applicant, you can make your decision accordingly after you hear the planning board's recommendation.
Yes, because this has not our last opportunity to speak to Mr. Voller. Why don't we, since they've been, proceed to the next public hearing?
Well, I have one thing, Madam Mayor. I was a little confused, I guess, when I saw this and I didn't call Randy, but I was just curious as to what the interest was in this, changing this from a special use. I mean, are we looking to have contracts come in here and put up six and seven hundred square foot houses, or garages, or campers, or whatever, in people's backyards?
There, I mean, there will still be regulations on accessory dwelling units. It's just gonna make it easier for people who, like, have elderly parents that want to come stay with them, go home, and it's gonna make them, that easier for them to have their parents nearby, or a child, or someone else to have a smaller unit on their property. We've gotten several people come in, you know, just didn't want to have to go through the whole special use permit process just to do something calm like that.
No, I'll make an observation. Accessory buildings are permitted by right, so you can put up a structure on a business out of it, which you couldn't right now, put up a structure and live in it without getting a special use permit.
Except if it's like an Airbnb structure, I wonder if that's...
I don't think Airbnb is a residential use.
That's a separate use.
So that would need to come off, didn't it?
There are such right uses for B and Bs, because it's more commercial.
Yeah. Is that true for Airbnb, too?
If we know about it, I mean, there's lots of them.
Madam Mayor, the driving interest in this was simply, we were working with Dave Clark and Lisa, who own the small street B and B. He has a son with special needs, who's thirty-two, and has an affordable housing type of voucher, and normally, if we had plenty of places to live, he's moved here from Minneapolis, he would live in Belmont Point, for instance, but it's full and there's a waiting list. And so, we were looking at options in town, and of course, it becomes particularly onerous, especially if you have to go through a special use process. And based on advice from staff and others, we looked at the UDO, and your UDO and process actually addresses this, which we supplied, and it is by right in the UDOJ. So, we just tried to align everything to exactly where the town is going policy-wise, but it could be quite a while before we have the UDO, so this seems to be a more eloquent fix between now and then. So, that's really the reason. I had no interest in it until I was approached by someone, and we tried to help someone and found out how difficult it was. And that's not getting into the financial part, just the regulation part. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I guess a little bit. I would just, I guess, I'm afraid we can answer this, but I was just a little more concerned as to if it gonna be a minimum lot size that this goes on. Where do we go from here, is what I'm looking at?
There are regulations around zoning, and we can, we would keep those. It's very specific. We would keep those regulations, it would move to a note, instead of being as a special use permanent regulation. So it would just move to a different section of the ordinance, and it would then be permitted by right, since staff gets it.
I think the lot, I think currently what we'd say is the lot has to be one and a half times the size of the zoning districts, so if it's a ten thousand square foot lot, it would need to be fifteen thousand square feet to have to as effective accessory dwelling that's not attached. So there are parameters that we would keep, but move them to an administrative role and not to a public hearing. Is that part of this text amendment, the relocation of those acres? Yes.
It's so odd that residential is not given, because that seems like that's pretty straightforward. But businesses, you know, if it's coming into a neighborhood, you might, I can see, but that makes things odd for residential.
No one can articulate why it's a special use permit today in our, in our song. I can tell you, we've had a number of people over my time here who have wanted to provide for housing for children or family members, or just wanted another home on their property. They have a lot of property, their parcel is large enough to accommodate more than one home, and they've had to go through a subdivision process to subdivide that to create a new, to create a separate lot. This will just take care of some of those loopholes that people have to go through to have another accessory dwelling, or have a accessory dwelling on their property. We've had some challenges with that in the past, with this amendment that we knew was coming with the UDO, and Randy talked to go ahead and move it there at his own cost, if you will, to make this proposal.
So right now, Jay, if you have a garage, for instance, attached or detached, and you wanted to have your mother-in-law, father-in-law, brother live in there, you can't just simply do that, and staff wants to be accommodating help, but you gotta go through a whole special use process, and I don't think that was the, it's not, I don't know if that was intended, but that's what we have, but the UDO really spells it out a lot nicer, and this kind of gets us to that point. So, I've worked with staff from, you know, the last couple of months, and came up with what we thought would be a good recommendation to go to the planning board and come back.
Right, thank you. Thank you. So that will proceed to plan. Victoria, the Northwood Inn.
MUPD. This is rezoning REZ dash two zero seven dash zero four. Eco Partners is proposing to rezone approximately ninety-one acres located along the western side of US fifteen five oh one north, just north of the US sixty-four bypass, from RA two residential agriculture to MUPD mixed-use plan development. This parcel has been zoned RA two since the late nineteen eighty. The future land use plan has designated this property for commercial. The surrounding properties to the south are zoned MUPD as well. To the north and to the west, there are properties zoned RA two, while to the east, there are properties zoned C two conditional use and PDD. Staff finds that the proposed amendment is consistent with the future land use plan, and that this parcel presents a suitable location for an MUPD district, as these parcels are located at the corner of two highways. The parcel's positioned directly north of an existing MUPD, and west of mixed-use development in the Chatham Park PDD, also enhances this location's suitability for an MUPD. Though staff finds this a suitable location for an MUPD, we would like to make a few notes. While this development is not a part of Chatham Park PDD, in as many ways possible, this development is used, has used Chatham Park elements, with the following small but noteworthy exceptions from the landscaping section. The Northwood narrative has proposed a thirty-foot tight C street scape buffer along all exterior publicly dedicated roads, including the US sixty-four bypass. Whereas currently written, the Chatham Park landscape element requires a fifty-foot tight C street scape buffer along the US sixty-four bypass. Also, we would like to note that the landscaping of walls and fences requirement from the Chatham Park landscape element has not been included in the narrative. However, the Chatham Park element allows walls and fences as close as five feet to the lot line, whereas the Northwood narrative requires fences and walls twenty feet from a public radius. Staff recommend that following the public hearing, that request be sent to lighting board.
And Mark Ashens has signed up as speaker. Mark?
Good evening, board members and staff, I'm Mark Ashens, PC group, three oh one Glenwood Avenue, Suite two twenty in Raleigh, North Carolina. Pleased to be in front of you tonight to talk about the rezoning proposal for the Northwood MUPD. As Victoria mentioned, this is a public hearing for rezoning, this does not deal with a future subdivision or a major infrastructure submission, that would come at a later date based upon approval of just the rezoning of the property. So that's what we're really discussing at this time. I'd like to introduce Kirk Radley, just raise your hand, John Fugue, Lenny Causey, and Kevin Scanlon. They're all members of the development team. Many of you know these individuals. Kirk and John have recently developed a veranda project, which is right at the entrance to Ryer Chapel on fifteen five oh one. John has done a lot of the commercial and office building work in Southern Village over the years. Kirk and his family were the developers of Governor's Club and Governor's Village in the northern part of the county. So these are up-seasoned professionals who live and are active in this county. The location of the project is the northwest quadrant of the fifteen five oh one US sixty-four interchange. Northwood High School is just north in the future land use plan, that's noted as civic and institutional. Randstel McLeod is to the west, and that is a low-density residential in the future land use plan. Powell Place to the south. Wade Barber owns a small sliver that's between the sixty-four right away, right in here, and fifteen five oh one. That's also shown as commercial in the future land use plan. In the southeast quadrant, Belmont Station MUPD, and then to the east is the Chatham Park PD District. So as Victoria mentioned, we're sort of surrounded by other master plans type of communities. In looking at the existing conditions, we're just over ninety-one acres, we're comprised by four parcels. Three of the parcels were actively managed for timber. There's actually a spoil site that you see there in red, that circle is when the sixty-four bypass was built, maybe remember that? This is a, some of the excess material was wasted up in here, so there's kind of a natural mound that you see circle in that. This parcel here is really the only one that was not really managed in timber, and so there's some hardwood trees. Four hardwood trees are located in that specific parcel. The elevations on the property range from about four forty to four eighty, with five ten being the largest, which would be the highest elevation, which is the top of the spoil pile. There are two buffer channels that run diagonally through the site. We anticipate having a roadway crossing of this buffer in the future to tie us to the Randstel property, the Powell property. We do not anticipate any impacts to the buffer here that's closer to fifteen five oh one. S and E C has been on the site, they've documented there's no federally protected species or species of concern within one mile of the property. There's one marginal wetland located in the northwest corner of the property, we'll have a detailed delineation done prior to a subdivision submission to assess that. There'll be several water quality ponds on the site, and we'll conform with the town's stormwater requirements for this project. Transportation improvements. It's not often that when you make a submission for rezoning, that you have a lot of the really finite details of the transportation worked out, but in this instance, it has been because some of the ongoing efforts at Chatham Park has been working with the DOT and the county school system. I think all of us would recognize right now, if you've been by Northwood in the morning, it's not a good situation. So, the improvements to Russ and Run have actually, for ingenious people, created a second way to queue into the site. People coming southbound will make a right into Russ and Run and go around the roundabout, and then set up to go straight across. So, the Russ and Run improvements have been helpful, but I don't think that was the intention, you know, of those improvements. So one of the great things about what's happening out there is we're gonna be providing a second access into the high school site right here, a little bit further north of the current access. There'll also be a roundabout, as you see, as you get closer to the Northwood school site. We also have already received approval from NCDOT for a leftover off of fifteen five oh one, so if you're heading northbound, you can actually make a left into our proposed site before you can get to the Northwood signal. That will also connect, as we'll show, the illustre plan back to the school. So if you think about it, there'll be actually three ways that you can get into school. One would be through the Northwood MUPD, one would be on the Northwood High School Road, and then one would be the further north entrance. And if you think about some of the relationships that will occur, school and the uses here, people will actually be able to not get back on fifteen five oh one if they're at the school and wanted to come to the MUPD, versus a lot of other developments, they'd have to get out on fifteen five oh one, then maybe make another turn to come back in, because of those cross relationships, we'll have that in place. The other thing is, is that the traffic volumes are well-suited for this type of use out here. On US sixty-four today, you have about fourteen thousand vehicles per day. On fifteen five oh one, you have about eighteen thousand vehicles per day. That sixty-four traffic's gonna increase substantially with the I five forty continuation from Holly Springs to Clayton, connecting to I forty south of Raleigh. That project's now been accelerated by NCDOT. So you're, I think your traffic on sixty-four outside of the county, just people coming through the county, is gonna substantially increase over time. So a regional center like this located at this interchange will be, I think, a very valuable asset, not just to town residents, county residents, but also people that are just utilizing the sixty-four corridor. As far as water and sewer improvements go?
Mark, could you give, for just a second? I'm curious, all of the, I guess, stuff I see in red, those are improvements the project's gonna make? The roadway improvements?
This is a left turn right here, and a leftover coming in, another left turn here, widening of Northwood High School Road, that you see right here, another leftover right here. This will be stub, this will actually come into the project, and I'll show up in the illustre, these two rows will come in. That one will be stub, that's like a future connector. And then obviously, this road here, which has been talked about a lot with the schools, is the second access point, so that, including the other turn lanes that you see out here, and the new signal, all of that is associated with this project and what's happening across the street.
So you're gonna have dual lefts into Northwood, or after these improvements are made? I think you said another left turn?
Yeah, I would have to verify that for you, Michael.
Okay. And is that?
I'm not sure we'll have dual lefts with this leftover right here, I'm not sure we have a second left at that point. We certainly have another left right here coming in. So there's three opportunities to make a left right now, and there's only one.
Is that showing a signal at the interchange exit?
Yeah. That is what the traffic study that Kim Lee Horn has put together has shown at that location. Now whether, when that's installed from a basing standpoint, I can't speak to that. Certainly those things will be discussed in the subdivision phase. This is the exhibit that NCDOT approved, that's attached with the driveway permit.
Calculating the use here proposed and the density?
Correct. That's correct.
Can I ask a follow-up question, Mark?
Sure.
Say that was Kim Lee Horn recommendation, that signal there at the interchange with highway sixty-four?
I would have to follow up on exactly whether that was their recommendation, I just know that the approval letter that we have from Kim Lee Horn and the exhibit associated with that approval letter shows that at that location.
Okay.
John Bonnet, Jeff Johnson and I sat in on a meeting recently with between DRT and Kim Lee Horn at Chatham Park, and there will be five lights going from Lowe's Home Improvement to the last northern driveway. So I don't remember what the time period was, but DOT indicated that they were indeed planning for five lights, on and off of sixty-four, one at Lowe's Home Improvement, on and off of sixty-four, the Northwood light, and then the second.
Further one step. Okay, thank you.
So I need for sixty-four, the traffic load backs up there, yeah?
Moving on to the water and sewer aspects, right now, the high schools rely on a single, I think it's a six-inch line that runs into the high school. One of the other things, similar to the transportation grid, will have looping water lines coming in, will have a new line coming in at our entrance of the leftover, and there'll be at least two tie points to the existing line that's coming into the high school. So that will provide a little better redundancy. With the elevated tank that's currently under construction at the Chatham Parkway and the sixty-four, that will boost the pressure, and with the lines that are coming down from that location along subtle, the flow should increase too. So there's, it'll be a dramatic improvement with the additional gridding of the water in that area. As far as the sewer goes, Chatham Park, as I said, they have an allocation. We have a letter that I'll provide from Chatham Partners, saying that they're allocating a hundred and twenty thousand gallons of their capacity to this specific project, the Northwood MUPD. We're proposing a lift station right in this corner, right here, and then we'll be pumping that across the road to times the existing sewer outfall near the medical offices on the Chatham Park side. The Russ and Run Lift Station will be increased, and then that flow right now is flowing back into town on Business fifteen five oh one. That flow is gonna be redirected up to their onsite water reclamation plant, that will create reuse quality water. So that's the game plan. And obviously, at the subdivision phase, all of those specifics would have to be in place, but at this point, we're doing rezoning, we're just indicating the plan and intention for water and sewer in that location. The way I look at this area, and I think all of you can appreciate it, is this is very similar to the Beaver Creek Shopping Center in Apex, it's at the intersection of NC fifty-five and US sixty-four. I know a lot of people probably in Pittsburgh and in eastern part of the county frequent that center. So the types of uses that you see in that center are, would be typical of what you might find in this location. So there's a range of uses. Closer to the intersection here of Northwood High School, we're showing on our illustre plan for out parcels, so those would be quality service, retail, quality service, restaurant type of uses there. And then behind that, we're looking for traditional retail, a grocer, other restaurant uses. When you move closer to sixty-four, we view those lots there as really the kind of lots that can support mid-size to large-size boxes. And, you know, obviously, some of those might be, two lots may be combined in one, based on the type of use that we've shown in our available uses. And then as you transition closer to the Northwood High School, we're showing garden-style apartments in that area. So I think that's sort of an effect of a regional transition, transition intensity from a commercial to a more residential format as you get closer to the high school itself. I mentioned that Wade Barber owns some land down here in the sound. We've been talking with all the property owners that have joined us, and Mr. Barber indicated he would like access to this property on this side of the buffer, and we've indicated to him that we will provide him a, an access to that property. That would be determined at a site-specific plan phase, but we would make that an understanding in this submission, and when we go to the subdivision submission, we would show a route that would be defined specifically located once we got to an individual site plan, not knowing what the uses would be on that lot. Up to twenty percent of the site is an open space. We had really good dialogue with the planning staff, and as I mentioned earlier, there was one parcel that had not been timber managed, sort of through this area here, and so one of the things that we did after talking with the staff is we moved this area from a development area to a park site. There's really a large stand of hardwood trees throughout that area, so our plan is not to really interrupt that, other than to have some walking trails through there, some benches, passive use in that area. We've got two potential restaurant sites sort of overlooking it. But the nice thing about that area is it's a good stand of hardwoods, and it's also visible from fifteen five oh one, so I think it'll have a nice appeal. We'll have a good pedestrian connectivity from all of the other uses on the site to that area, so we want that to be sort of a focal area, and we'll have a, we'll have a water quality pond adjoining it as well. I think that pretty much covers the presentation, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
And there's no one else signed up for public comment? So is there anyone in the audience that would wish to speak even though they did not sign up? Thank you. Other questions from the board?
I'm curious about this spoil site. You referred to it as spoil site. But is the vision that perhaps that would be spread, graded out?
Yes, I'm sure that would be the case, because it's somewhat of a mounted area right now, and it would need to be adjusted. It has some pine trees growing on it, you can sort of see that demarcation there. And the elevation change is probably about 15 feet, somewhat abrupt. So yeah, my guess is that material's probably not, there's a reason they moved that material over to this property, so hopefully it'll be utilized, maybe as topsoil or something like that, that we can work into the site plan.
There's also, let me go across the street, the residential multifamily area, that's really intriguing. It's described as garden-style apartments. I'd like to learn a little bit more about that, appreciate it.
Yeah, garden style is really just the traditional apartments that you see kind of around the triangle right now. They're generally three-story units, so you're going to have typically 24 units to a building. You'll have usually two access points in it, and there'll be eight units to each floor. So I could definitely furnish you some examples of that, and both Kirk and John are developing those kind of apartments in the region right now.
So 264 units, it looks like 15 acres?
That's correct.
And it's like 18-unit breaker?
That's right. That's fairly typical. I mean, if you're in a more urbanized area, and we've seen, we've done these kind of projects, we've put that kind of density on a 10-acre parcel. But in a suburban type of setting, this is pretty typical, somewhere in the order of, I'd say, 13 to 15 or 16 acres is typical for this type of project.
And it looks like it might hold a spot of tree-covered TCA?
Yes, that's correct. And there's some tree save right here in the front here, and again, we feel like this is sort of a marquee location, so it's at this intersection, we've got an area here where we should make the grades work out, there's no reason.
I can imagine that being a very nice kind of signage or feature to drive in past.
Exactly.
Welcoming.
In addition to the street trees and other things we're proposing, it's always nice to have some vegetation like that that's outside the buffers. And right now, I think we've got 20% of the site is an open space, so I think that's a good number.
I really appreciated seeing the tree survey in this application, and I have a lot of questions about it, I'm not going to go into all of the details, but I'm curious, in particular, there was another spot, it looked to my eyes like around Lot 13 and Lot 14, that was very close to where that road was laid out. Actually, the slide we're just on would probably be more helpful. Yeah, so anyway, it did seem it was right around the north corners of 13 and 14.
So the band is somewhat right through here, so these parcels were linear parcels?
Yep.
And three of them managed the property, timber management, and one of them didn't. So that's why we have sort of a bonus part, we're sort of through this area right here.
Yep, and so that cluster on 13 and 14, it looked, because it was, you know, I didn't do a GIS or overlay or anything, but it looked like it might be on the bottom side of that proposed public street, and I just would, it'd be really nice if that could be in consideration for, say...
No, I think that's a great point. It's not to say that there aren't other trees that we would not save, it's just hard to fathom that or envision it at this point without having better information. That's right, yeah.
Yeah, it looked like that public street curved just a little bit around that cluster and keep a nice asset on the landscape. About the garden-style apartments, being generally three-story, will they have elevators? Or is it too early?
No, that's it. Really, usually the three-story ones do not have elevators. Once you go above three is when you see the elevators.
Are there any further questions regarding this rezoning?
Curious to hear a little bit more about, you've mentioned the phrase "regional center", in particular, you were referring to the amount of traffic off Highway 64 that might swoop in for some...
Food.
Beverage, or whatever shopping on the way to or from.
Exactly, yeah. I mean, if you think about it, this type of center would not be well-suited for right here on Old Business 64, right? So the point I was making is, is that if you just envisioned where you would want to have these kind of uses for people that are just moving through, so maybe they're stopping at Beaver Creek today, or they're stopping at Silver City or in Ashborough, for example, you're going to catch some of that traffic now, and hopefully that's going to be beneficial for the people that are going to be operating businesses in this location. So there's already a wealth of traffic here. Sometimes when you build something, you're bringing traffic to you, right? In this instance, the traffic is already here, so it's really one of the most well-suited locations, being this close to the interchange, and then with the significant improvements that are going to be done on 15-501 and the other roads that are going to feed into the west, I feel very comfortable that it's going to be well-accommodating for that.
Well, that covers my questions. I just want to express gratitude for, it's evident that there is quite a lot of thought that was put into this.
Appreciate that. We went through several reviews with the town, so I'd like to say the town staff certainly helped move us in this direction. Thank you.
And if board members have additional questions or concern, of course, we'll see Mark back again, but you might want to speak to members of the planning board who might be able to address those at the meeting in February.
I do have a couple of questions, maybe observations. And I think, so Victoria, you made mention of some language that you wanted to include from the Chatham Park landscaping rules. And I don't think it's bad language to include. One of the things I would like to do, though, is add, suggest, an exception to these landscaping rules against these walls. And I think that we've done this in the Chatham Park element, that when that wall is portraying or exhibiting public art that would otherwise be obstructed by this landscaping, that the landscaping not be a requirement. Because I think some of these walls could really be fantastic, so we could include that. Couple of documents that are mentioned, that are included, that I'm not finding, is the TIA and the SNEC report, but I think I identified the shrines and the wetlands and those items. So I don't know if it's online, we just don't have a printed copy.
We didn't put the TIA online, it's quite large.
Okay.
We can definitely get that to you, people on it. It covers not only improvements that's associated with this development, but all of the mosaics that's happening with the 44 acres and then beyond, where the medical office buildings are happening. So it helps us more than the 92 acres that we're talking about now. And as the mayor mentioned, we were in a meeting with Chatham Park and DOT, probably November timeframe. One of the things I would like for Chatham Park to do, because this is all really Chatham Park-related improvements associated with these improvements that the executive group's going to do as well, is come to the planning board and to you all at some time, either with this rezoning or the mosaic subdivision that's coming, and go through the progression of these improvements, phase one, phase two, phase three, and that way we'll be able to know when the first CO happens here, we're going to see a light here, we're going to see that roadway extended or something like that. So that's going to be a presentation that Chatham Park has already said that they would do, it's just the timing of when that's going to happen. So we're going to have more information to share with you all on that.
Well, I guess that's the point I was getting at.
Yeah.
Is what is this project's obligation, say, it happens and nothing else happens?
Right.
Right?
Right.
So what does this project, what impact does it have? How's this mitigated?
So what it's looking like is we'll have the transportation engineers at the planning board meeting in February, give the planning board that overview, and then half a year, everything comes back to work.
I can see a lot of the proposed improvements making a lot of sense, but I didn't think that this project was going to be the straw that put a traffic signal.
Yeah, there's a lot of things happening in concert, say, A, this area, developers think that a lot of this is going to be happening simultaneously, and the improvements will be all, be happening as these developments come under our control. So we'll have a presentation for you.
Great.
This is going to be presented in February, what?
Definitely, this is the thanks of me.
The lighting portion, is that forbade on the Chatham Park elements?
I think so. You could ask that.
It looked like it to me.
Yeah, a lot of cues from the elements were taken.
I know, we spent a lot of time trying to get that lighting.
Right. And I think that's why they did so, because that has been beat up quite a bit, and they thought, well, if I cut through this board for Chatham Park, that it may be okay for this development as well.
I guess the other observation I have at this point is, Road A is an awfully long dead end.
Yeah.
And I don't know that the fire marshal or fire chief...
Looks like we're landing planes on it.
Yeah.
So Mark could describe to you the future vision of that, if you want.
Well, you know, I think it's about 900 feet length. I forget what our standard is, is it 600?
I don't know, we'd have to look at that.
Somewhere. I know you were going to have a temporary pull set.
Yeah, absolutely, temporary pull set. You have to also think there's going to be several other key access driveways all along there. We just don't know specifically where they're going to be along that road. But we definitely wanted to connect the road through the Randstel McCloud. And we view this road as really a service road parallel to 64, and if you just think in the future, there's no reason this road doesn't go all the way over to 87, and maybe even beyond that at some point in time. The school system, I think, is interested in seeing that as well. And the other thing we did is we've made the right-of-way on that road wider than what it would be needed today, what they had thought that this would potentially be some kind of a parkway or collector in the future. It wouldn't necessarily be driven by the level of intensity we're proposing, but as if other things happened over time, and I'm talking about 10 years from now or longer, we don't want to look back and go, gosh, I wish we had more right-of-way there, had not planned for this thing to be extended.
Do you anticipate a driveway into the apartments off of that road?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. So there'll be at least seven, probably on the south side, connection points, and then there'll be another driveway off the apartments on the northern side of that. So there'll be ample points of ingress and egress along there.
Thanks.
Are there further questions? If not, is there a motion to go out of public hearing?
Move.
Moved by John Bonnet, seconded by Michael Cleaver. Those are the things indicated by the NPA. Most votes, motion carries. Now it's time for citizens' matters. There's no one signed up for public expression speakers for this meeting, but is there anyone who cares to speak who has not signed up? In that event, so take next to the agenda item for commissioners' updates, generally we start here with this for, by updating on meetings that I have attended over the last two weeks since our last meeting. Weather permitting, there have been meetings, I've been trying to meet each week with the town manager, Brian Brucebeck, and at our meeting on the 10th of January, Julie Emmons, congressional staff member to Congressman Walker, stopped by and visited with us and shared in some concerns. On the 11th of January, I attended an education session with our superintendent that was held here in the county. On the 12th, I attended a retirement party for one of the staff members of Habitat for Humanity, and then gave blood as my contribution for MLK Day. So are there meetings that folks would like to address, that they've been to on behalf of the town, either Fair Grounds or Triangle J, Main Street, or climate change?
Let me tell you, that Main Street was hopeful to be able to give a more full presentation this evening, but I think we're going to be able to do that at the next meeting. And of course, on our agenda is a Main Street item about expanding the boundaries, so I'll leave that for our agenda item.
Triangle J is scheduled for later this week, on Wednesday. However, on Saturday, I attended a panel discussion about women running for public office, sponsored by Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. It included myself, I included Senator, Judicial District Court Judge, and a school board member, a mayor from Town Carver, and another school board member from the city of Carver. And we had a discussion regarding women running for office, possible office. So it was a lot of young ladies there, it was very, very well-tended, and it was very inspiring as well. So I did that on Saturday after the snow. That's the only thing I have to say about it.
The county climate change advisory committee meeting, a lot of people missed due to the extreme snow last week, so that's pretty much been postponed until February 1.
I was going to say that Commissioner Baldwin and I attended a night event in Silver City in honor of Martin Luther King, and very uplifting, not only from the speakers, but there was a lot of young talent there, a group of drummers that were incredible, and it was just a really powerful event.
Thank you all very much. Under new business, we're looking at Jim Nos, who's going to give us an update on the ABC Board.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Quickly give you an update on ABC Board activities for the first quarter. We continue to increase our sales over the same period last year, even though last year was a very good year. And year-to-date, we are up, and if I look ahead a little bit to where we're at right now, each month we continue to increase the amount that we were over where we were last year. So we're still growing. Another significant point for us is the mixed beverage account. That's where we sell liquor for resale at restaurants and bars, and that is continuing again to increase, and we expect it to take a hit from the Oakley departure. And as a matter of fact, we've overcome that hit and gone further. So with the new activities that have occurred in town over the last while, those sales have actually increased rather significantly, not only in terms of the quantity, but in terms of the price of the liquors that are being purchased by the restaurants. So that fear of having a downturn there has not taken place. And that's particularly important from a financial perspective, because the profit that we make on mixed beverage sales is significantly higher than it is for over-the-counter retail sales, so it's a good business for us to be in. One of the things that we told you that we were going to do is try to do a cost and benefit analysis in terms of our relocation effort, and that has been postponed until our February meeting. So when I get back to you in March with the second quarter update, I should be able to give you more information about that. It's still in our plan, and we're still trying to gather up the proper way to make that analysis. But tonight, I have checks for you in the amount of $10,800. But tonight I have checks for you in the amount of $10,800. And in March, I'll come back with checks for even more than that. But I'd be more than happy to answer any questions or comments from the board.
I just have a comment, and that is, I understand there's a new wedding venue that's just opened up at Chatham Mills, and if people there at these weddings consume as much as they do at Fairton, then it'll be really good for the business.
Yes, indeed, yes, indeed it will.
Any other questions for Jim?
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, well then let me give you these checks.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next item of new business is the small town Main Street boundary. Brian Bruceck.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have up on the screen and describing your memorandum is included in your packet this evening, the request and recommendation from the Main Street, Small Town, Pittsburgh Small Town Main Street Program to expand its boundaries. You see in the map that's displayed and also included in your packet that the previous and original boundaries established by the blue line, they're recommending that the boundaries be expanded to the area encompassed by the red line. As you're aware, the Main Street Program's been very active in expanding its programming, continues to do so, has shown a great amount of energy and enthusiasm, and this boundary, I believe reflects, better reflects, I think, the historic downtown nature of this area. We have Maria Lewis from the program with us this evening. If you have any questions, Commissioner Fioke, I know, has also been involved in this discussion at their committee level as well. Request is pretty straightforward, requesting to approve the resolution that would reestablish these boundaries. If approved, I would forward along to the state and to county commissioners. With that, I would put up for any comments, questions, concerns that you would have.
Any questions for Mr. Bruceck or folks from the Main Street?
I did.
You did?
I think there were a lot of key commercial properties that were not included in the original boundary. And for the longest time, we've looked at it and none of us could really make sense of why they were excluded and thought this was a good time to include them.
Maria Parker, do you wish to add?
No, I think that both Brian and Michael kind of represented our thoughts. We are very active now. We're very active, we've incorporated, we've got our four committees going, and I was hoping to give you an update to show you everything that we've been doing. That'll wait till next month. But this, the original map was seven years ago. And we thought now that we're really hitting the ground running and starting to affect change, we wanted to go back and make sure that we were affecting as much change on as large an area as is feasible and feasible at this time. And I think, you know, Brian's right, this does better reflect our historic area, and there's some guidelines that we have to follow. We consulted with the Main Street Program, they approved of the map, and I think now's the time to go ahead and make this change.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I actually have some questions.
From Maria?
For Commissioner Fioke. I'd like to hear a little bit about process and how this particular map was created.
Well, there are some guidelines that we have to follow from the program. So it has to be continuous, it has to be historic. One of our goals is to make sure it's a walkable area and mostly commercial. So general guidelines.
We could not find a way to make Chatham Mills part of it.
And that doesn't mean that that can't happen in the future, but with it having to be continuous, there's too much residential knockoff between downtown and the mills.
And is there, is there a process by which the association sought input from non-association members or from public or?
Not for the expansion.
So it was, I think I heard Commissioner Fioke say there was a number of properties that just seemed to, over the years, why weren't they included and basically just throw a lasso around those that were obvious in that regard or ones that have been discussed over the years?
Yeah, we couldn't find any really explanation for why. We talked with Liz, who was part of the original process, and she also didn't understand why some were.
Why some might have been excluded or other included.
Commissioner Bott, it was apparent when we had those part of it others come from the state to talk to the board about this, and the board also includes Mike Dasher from the county and a few other people that are business owners who aren't here, but Doug Evans, Greg Lewis, and Jim Nass are also on the board in the audience. It was not really well understood why that initial section was set up the way it was. It seemed to kind of overlap with our historic district, but not quite. There was a lot of question about could we pull in the historic Chatham Mill, and that was what kind of the driving focus. But we can't get to it yet based on their state requirements, but we may get to it if certain zoning changes happen. But that map pretty much matches up with the old historic map of Pittsburgh if you go back to 1787 and look at like rectangular grid of Pittsburgh, which is what we're trying to capture. I mean, one of the key questions was why did it not include the Obiolex Building, which is a building that could be converted to something else, but then it included something else? So we went through all the appropriate steps with the state, which took about a year, and then they said you need to bring it back to the town board for approval. And so we thought, we followed the process that they prescribed. And then I provided you some information that we looked into on the district, you know, what's the existing tax value of the district, just interesting information you may want to know as policymakers, what's being added and what the total would be.
Okay. Yeah, the one that, and forgive me for not having been aware of the process previously and had conversations with y'all before, but the hatchery on Rectory Street kind of jumps out at me as to why that wasn't included with this change. We go all the way right up to it.
There's no, there's no reason that couldn't be included. Coming to the town, you could make suggestions at your level. We attempted, so we meet over at the staff's office, the Chatham Mills, and Victoria actually is our liaison, so we tried to work with Victoria on this. But there is no reason why your suggestion couldn't be taken in. I mean, Michael is the liaison from this board. It's just, this was the suggestion to come forward, but if you have other ideas you want to add based on your input, there's no reason why it couldn't be added.
That's in the southwest corner. Yes.
I'd call that due west, but. And then, I guess I'm also curious about Main Street Station, although that doesn't have much of a semblance of what I understood to be its historical uses or features. It has an interesting story.
Like in the beginning, at Main Street meetings, they were suggesting not getting the area too large. And I think that it was very difficult. I remember there was a lot of discussion about whether to draw the boundary. It was a difficult decision to leave some out, but they really had to draw the line. And like I said, as the program gets more and more established, there's no reason why it can't keep expanding. But I think, you know, you have a limited amount of funding and to do certain areas well as opposed to spreading things out too much, I think was the idea behind what I might take on it. And I think that still, it's really difficult, like really draw the line.
And I haven't begun to think about what the implications are for expanding the boundaries. So maybe Commissioner Fioke, you can speak to that?
Well, I think we obviously get a lot more properties that are eligible for the road. We get a lot more tax revenue, we get a lot more tax value, as Randy's done a ton of research recently on this and has used just a snippet of the data here. And so with that increased revenue, there's the possibility of repurposing some funds into improvements in the area.
Does that mean there's increasing tax implications for businesses that are drawn into the boundary?
No, this does not increase the tax base at all.
So it's some kind of return of state funds?
It would be return of the town's funds to the program, to the area through the Main Street Program so that we could execute on the plans that we are developing. Now, there could be, if the property's so desired, they could have special task district imposed or overlay, not imposed, it would be voluntary. And if they wanted to, then they could establish revenues that goes exclusively for this area. That's an option.
That would be a whole nother discussion for members of the Pittsburgh, the Main Street Program in Pittsburgh.
Yeah, that would really not be a decision Main Street Program can make. It would be something that advertised to the owners, but that would be something that the town would do.
So there's no additional burden placed on businesses that are included?
Nope.
Can I add, there's an immediate benefit? So we had that new bakery that opened up, right now they can't take advantage of our accounting program because they're not within our boundaries. But if they include that, then with an approach, they could take advantage of that. And that, that other boundary especially did not make sense because one side of the street was in it and the other side was not. So one side had the benefit of that, the other side didn't. And then that's not there, which is a big deal. There that could take advantage of that. So there's no immediate burden, but I think there's an immediate benefit.
That was the driving force, Commissioner Bott, was that we had people who wanted facade grants and wanted to be part of the Main Street District, as Maria's pointing out, and we couldn't really address it because they weren't in the district, but we couldn't come up with a compelling reason why they weren't in the district. And since the whole goal of that program is to improve the look of these businesses and buildings, we went through the process with the state to come back with this map, which we thought is a good first step. And of course, it could be amended from time to time, but at least it seems to make more sense based on the historic boundaries of our town.
Well, we've got some bump outs for other reasons that are clearly compelling, the Obiolex building, for example. And I'd really like to see conversation unfold regarding that West Street, Johnston Street, Salisbury Street block. There's several businesses there, and I think they're really big contributors to develop the downtown economy and would very much like to see them given the opportunity to give input before we take action.
Because I'm not that much sure what you're talking about. Is it, that's one of the?
Yep, contiguous. So at Rectory Street, it ends on the presumably the west, excuse me, east side of the street. And I'm suggesting that perhaps it would be ending at Johnston Street, now advised Salisbury to the north and west to the south over here.
So you're talking about where the hatchery, your hatchery is, is a restaurant?
And forest. You're talking about pulling in the Greek cuisine, right? That's what it is.
Angelina.
Angelina's.
Maybe that sort of building too, there's some compelling reasons to include it.
The one thing I would mention in the Main Street Board number is that the state has very, very strict guidelines on what you can and cannot have in your district. And we had one devil of a time convincing them even to let us go this far because they require walkability, historic, contiguous, and a number of other criteria. Given to the Main Street Board, at least this member, we would make this much larger. We would include Chatham Mills, we would do all kinds of things, and then we would no longer be part of this Main Street Program. We would be out, and we would have to create some other non-problem vehicles to carry that forward. I mean, we twisted this in some arm pretty heavily from the state to get her to agree to this, to just put that out.
Well, this is, it's informative, it's exciting, I love the program, I want to continue to support the program. But one criticism that I've heard about the program has been the lack of public input, lack of public process. And rather than lay your excellent team vulnerable to that claim again, I think it'd be really great if, now I see some heads nodding that maybe that would be a reasonable inclusion, and if indeed that's a reasonable inclusion, then maybe we should.
I think we don't have any concept of how difficult it would be, I mean, you think it's going on the process. I am surprised to hear about people believing that there's no opportunity for public input because my impression of Main Street Program is constantly trying to get people involved. I'm really surprised to hear that kind of feedback.
Well, we may need to normalize that process.
Doug Evans on board as well, currently serves as treasurer, I just add that, you know, one of the things we tried to do this last year was we actually had, I think, one of the first public meetings of this organization for public input and sharing. So we did an information update back in February. And the mayor and Commissioner Fioke and State Representative Robert Reeves and Commissioner Crawford were all there in attendance. We had probably close to about 100 people that showed up.
Was that also coinciding with the topic of the circle?
It was.
Traffic improvements. And I wasn't able to make that meeting.
And we have a presentation that we shared during that, because we're just now putting up our website, we'll put on that website as well so that people can see it. I think one of the challenges we've had is that we're in startup mode, and even this for us is a great step forward because, as I think Randy mentioned, and Jim and Maria, we would like to make the Main Street District bigger. There's things that we have in this town that really fit that concept. We're not there yet. And I think also with our budget, we're not there yet. You know, the bigger we make it, the thinner we spread our budget, the ability of us to make an impact becomes less visible. And what we really want to do is grow this in an impactful way. So I think what we're trying to do this year, with some of the monies that we have as well as, you know, taking this next step, is part of the progression of the journey. And I think your suggestion is to look at other properties is spot on. We would love to do that, but I might suggest we do that over the next couple of years. And then we continue to show success each year, and maybe the thing that we need to do is look at another public input session, you know, sometime over the next six months just to share with everybody where we've come since the last session of almost a year. But I am encouraged. I think there's some great progress being made. We've got a lot of activity underway that we'll hear more about next month, and some good people.
Yeah, and, you know, I'd just like to add, we said that that was our first meeting this last year, that's actually our third meeting. Main Street had three meetings that we, public meetings, mostly concerning the circle. With that, and we were not, we didn't have boards, we had committees, we weren't incorporated. But those of us that were involved, that was one of the things that we were very concerned about. It's getting public opinion, especially for something as large as that circle improvement. So that's definitely, we see this guy, not an organization that's run by an 11-member board. This is a community organization, so we have the town, the town to the business, the property, you know, the citizens. That's our goal, and we're, as I said, we're, we've got our committees, Doug mentioned the website, there could be many ways to get involved, to volunteer and serve and public meetings, we're part of that plan.
Well, I think as Doug mentioned, we're in startup mode, so to speak. It's hard to say that we're in startup mode when we got into the program in 2011. But 2011 to date, there have been a lot. But 2011 to date, there have been a lot of improvements in downtown. And it's been kind of this core group of people who have been scratching and clawing and trying to make things happen. This is only the second year that the town has provided any funding at all to the Main Street program. And so part of the funding budget that we established was getting the work out. Creating a website, advertising in our state, advertising locally in newspapers and magazines, Facebook, Leslie's managing the Facebook page, making sure she's blasting things out. We are always asking for volunteers, always. And really, this year, well, I'd say up until last year, we really have four strong committees who have several people, you know, the design committee's got at least seven, eight people that are showing on a fairly regular basis, or meeting on a monthly basis. I know Randy's driving the economic restructuring committee. Who's got promotions?
Leslie has promotions.
Leslie has promotions. And so, you know, you'll remember that we have a town slogan now. You know, that was Main Street. We've got events, we've got Summer Fest, we've got holidays. These things are the things that Main Street has been doing. And it's one of those things where slowly, 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 but we're at a point now where you add it up and it's a substantial body of work. And it's really gaining. And so that's our interest in enlarging the boundary. And we did have Liz at at least one meeting, might have been two, where she kind of riled us into keeping us from getting too big. We were trying to do that. And this is something sketch, just back in probably work.
But I would like to add, John, there is going to be a huge event at Postal Fish in March that you are, all this board and staff and other folks are on the invite list. And that event also will include the first time we've ever invited every single property owner of these downtown parcels and tried to get them all in a room and talk about Pittsburgh Main Street. I think it's on March 5th, but you could move a little bit. But you should come to that, and I think it'll be a very interesting event. And that's what Main Street's trying to do, is convene people around a common vision. And I don't see there any reason why we couldn't add those parcels, but I think it would have to be done after we get this first one approved by them and then come back, as Doug suggested, and say, hey, the town would like us to do it. Because we need to get them to accept it after you approve it. And then I think we could show progress. I think that's fair.
There's nothing to say that you can't come that way.
No, nothing, no, we couldn't.
And also, the Main Street, the meeting that you were talking about, I think was a special meeting where the main topic was the circle. And that was, and we bought, people in from the state, I was at that meeting too. And some of the public was there. And it was very, very informative, very informative, they asked questions, so that was very good. And the public was invited to come to that and share their opinion and everything.
I'd say the main thrust was, I think, the circle, but it was also the secondary, I would not even know if it's secondary, but it was our main thrust also, was to express the need for volunteers and to try to get folks to participate.
So the other point I would make is that in this past few months, we have incorporated as a North Carolina nonprofit, and our petition for approval from the IRS to be able to accept contributions to Main Street as being able to take those exemptions, or as contributions as a write-off on your income tax is pending before the IRS. We expect to get our 501(c)(3) status approval within the next 30 to 45 days, which makes a tremendous amount of difference as we begin our efforts to fundraise throughout the community. So that's another really big step that wasn't there a few months, well, a year ago. We were not incorporated as a North Carolina nonprofit. And we had not filed an application with the IRS for 501(c)(3) status. And that does make a huge difference.
Does Paul Horns, he's still working with the Main Street?
Not much.
Not much?
No, it's really, Maria's the chair of the board, and all the volunteers are really doing the work, yeah.
I know when I first came on the board here, the facade program came available. And he and I personally went downtown, I probably went on the board about six months, but we personally went down to the landowners and business owners that I knew right away. And we had several that took advantage of that facade program immediately. I'm talking about within months, whether it be awnings or painting the fronts or anything. So it is a very well-deserved program.
That is still in the budget today, so if you know folks downtown that want to take advantage of it, get the word out. We are trying to get the word out. We are trying desperately to make this available so that folks know about it. I know we've got one group thinking about it.
I'm looking at the Pittsburgh NC.gov website, and I'm not seeing a link to this downtown Main Street website.
Department of Commerce?
Well, I see it, I see it in the state, but I'm just, of course, Pittsburgh.
No, it's not. Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Even one. And I'm on the Main Street.
Go to the...
I'm on the Main Street, the Main Street program page.
We don't have a link, yes.
Oh, okay.
We've got, our website is up, right? Our website is up.
Our website is up. I think if you go to our website, you'll, you can link to the town website.
But we need to get the towns to link.
But I'm saying, I've got the other, I've got the other, it's on the Main Street program page of the town, like, where traffic, where you go. And thank you.
So are we moving towards a motion or a decision?
Final thought, Commissioner Fiocco, I appreciate you pointing out the, and Commissioner Farrell, the facade improvement program. And I noted that those funds in this year's budget hadn't been spent. And that's why I was thinking, actually, Mr. Evans, that it's the opposite of what you suggested, that it's not a limitation of funds, that we have an abundance right now and that we, I mean, that's my only reticence about voting for this. So how about, let me just ask for some reassurance that what action will be taken as regards the Johnson Street, Salisbury Street, West Street block?
I think from economic vitality, I'd certainly be willing to reach out to them and come back and discuss it on our board, once we have an approval from this board, about whether we can amend the map and come back. That would be my assurance. I see no problem from our end. I mean, it's clear that we'd like to get more properties in, but we, I mean, we were really trying to get Chad O'Mill in because it made a lot of sense, because it's historic, but we, every which way we tried, we couldn't. So it's not that we don't want, but we would, John, we would like to do it.
That's a fling.
It's a fling.
That's a fling, this isn't a fling.
It's not. I don't think that would be a problem. I think that the board would discuss it and would probably be willing to come back and present another map to you that would go to Liz and basically tell her that the town board was interested in this.
That sounds good.
I have one thing regarding what Jim said back there, you know, he said that they went, felt like they went above and beyond to get this boundary in. I think we should go ahead and move with this. And then down the future, if it needs to expand, expand. But, you know, they've worked this hard on this section right here. We should go ahead and move with approval on this.
Yeah, and I think... Commissioner Farrell, I didn't mean to imply in any way that I wasn't willing to support it, but it's my only reservation, and my reservation has been addressed, so.
I think, John, you could really help us if you wrote us a quick email saying you support this and you'd love to see these parcels, and that would help us take it back. Because it always helps us to go to the staff level of the state to say that the policymakers are the ones supporting this and not us coming to you and saying that we're trying to do this.
Well, and I think we could take it up.
I think it's historic, it is possible there, and I think it makes sense. But again, I think we should move forward tonight, but it'd be nice to include that.
I think we can commit to taking it up at the next board meeting. I agree, Main Street board meeting, that addition, and any others that, really, I think you mentioned Main Street, also Main Street Station, potentially.
I mean, I think the historical value is maybe a little bit more questionable there, but...
But I think the Hatchery building, that building at least, I mean, I remember that when I was a kid, at least, I think it's 60 years old. Yeah, I know it's quite a bit older, but I know, I'm not 60. No, but I know it was an old building, but it was an old building when I was a kid.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We've got Michael Fiocco, second to five, both Pam and Jay. Those in favor please indicate by saying aye. That is great. Motion to adjourn now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Respect to both businesses. We will move now to the landscaping additional element, guided by Jeff Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll walk you through the landscaping element. We've seen this a number of times over the last couple of months. We had a discussion at our January 8 meeting, and the applicants went back and drafted some comments that, or redrafted the element to address comments that they received at the meeting and via email from some commissioners. What you have before you is their redraft. You also have a memo from Town Park that outlines their changes. What I will say is the staff has reviewed the element, and we're generally fine with it as we have been for the last couple of iterations. And we'll point out the integrated multiple use development. We had a couple of comments on this last time. It's something that's relatively new to the element. It's, I think, came in on the last iteration and it's carried on through this iteration. This language is something different than what we've currently seen in any other element. And I'm not sure that the landscape element is wholly the right place to have provisions that would exempt development from parking and tree protection. That's in this element and not in those elements. That doesn't seem a correct flow of ordinance writing to me. Possibly, we should have had this type of language that speaks to integrated mixed-use developments and the general provisions portion of the ordinance that. This is how a development could occur. And those will address specific topics in landscaping, or parking, or, you know, what have you. But to put provisions in a landscape ordinance that exempts or does something different than what the parking ordinance says is a little odd. So I'll just point that out, that we have provisions that if a developer chose to do this type of development, compliance with all-street parking requirements and tree protection will be evaluated and considered by the development as a whole, not compliance with any particular parcel-by-parcel basis. That language doesn't seem to fit. All this mixed-use development language doesn't seem to only talk to landscaping, as that was sort of a code to us at the last meeting. I think the goal of sort of future-proofing the element to allow for a subdivision or different ownership of parcels, but then a mixed-use area or a mixed-use center, a shopping center, is something that we probably want to explore at some point in time. But I'm not sure that we have to put this language in today for us to consider. And I think having integrated center language is good. It's just it's not consistent amongst the other elements. And we, if we want to have this language, it should have been in the parking ordinance. It should have been, most likely, in the general provisions and definitions to find what this type of development is. Because we're talking about a development pattern. And someone choosing to develop this way, it's not wholly in this section. So I think if you all want to talk to the applicant about that and have the applicant walk you through what they're thinking about this, that would be beneficial to you all and possibly staff as well. Again, the other things that are in the ordinance or in the element is generally what's been there for the other exemptions, those have been carried on through the original one. It's just probably something you want the applicant to talk a little bit about.
Well, I think, Jeff, you know, I've had some experience with this particular style of development. And it, you know, I know we keep using the word multiple and mixed interchangeably, but really the idea that's multiple uses is necessarily a mix, but multiple uses. And the example that I can use is a project such as Penguin Place. That has three buildings on the lot, on a single lot. If the landscape additional element did not provide for some ability for the interior lots to be exempt from buffers, should each one of those buildings be on their own lot, you could not have the common drive aisle and the parking spaces that serve both buildings or all three buildings. So that's the kind of thing that it's trying to address. And there's nothing, I don't think, in the multiple use description that says you don't meet the parking standards. It says you share the parking. And I think by any other measure, you would have to, any development would have to meet the parking requirements. Just that they would have to also have the burden of sharing them. So I'm not sure why we're talking about parking in a landscaping ordinance. Well, I think the objective was to...
Right. I hear you. That seems like we should have taken care of that in the parking ordinance and here, potentially.
But I hear what you're saying, but having it in the element, it still doesn't go outside of, it doesn't impose any requirements or provide any exemptions that are unidentified. It talks about common driveways, common parking, common landscaping. And most of the time, I think this application of this development pattern would be on the front end. Somebody would come in and say, I want to have five lots, and I want them all to have their own property so that I can have individual owners own this. And they've agreed that they're going to share the parking, the drive aisles, the landscaping, and the signage. I think those are four elements that it says, you're going to share it and you're going to act like a single entity, but you're going to be individual owners. So right now, if at Penguin Place, the root seller is doing very well, so Pittsburgh likes the root seller, I can see the root seller saying a couple of years from now, hey, Mr. Developer, I want to own this place. I didn't hire to pay any rent. I want to own it. And then wanting to do a subdivision and carving out the parcel. And without this style of development available to them, it would have to have box between the parcels.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we would retroactively make anybody go back and do that.
Okay.
I mean, that would be odd.
So?
I mean, it may not meet, I'd have to reevaluate other aspects of the landscape ordinance. But I think if you have similar uses in the same district, there may not be landscaping in between the parcels already. So that wouldn't necessarily be true. But I'd have to reevaluate that. Now, I don't see why current staff would not hold somebody saying, I'm not going to sign this plaque until I see a row of bushes at this property line. That makes no sense. And that's why I understand the concept, I'm just unsure of how we get there. And, you know, if this is something that we have to necessarily do today with this iteration, or is it something that we reevaluate later down the line? That's sort of essentially what I put out in the memo. And again, maybe the applicant can articulate why it's needed today. And again, maybe the applicant can articulate why it's needed today in this draft and not at an amendment time at our annual updates.
Well, and I'll say that I'm reviewing these types of documents. I'm bringing many different hats to the table. And one of them is the knowledge that our intent today, unless clearly spelled out, will not be necessarily interpreted the same way tomorrow. So I appreciate what you're saying about your interpretation and your staff right now. Yeah, you would interpret something. But I have seen that changes in...
So is there a way that we can have some of this language that speaks to multiple development and have it remain to this element of landscaping? Not bring in parking or other elements that we've already passed that would have to come back through an amendment process? That's where I think the applicant needs to hear you all and staff and say, you know, we're trying to fit a square peg for a round hole in a landscape element. That just doesn't... We need to get rid of this language. Nobody would write ordinances this way and know that the parking element speaks nothing to multiple integrated developments. There's no language in the parking element for that. You don't want to have consistency amongst your ordinances, and hopefully we'll have that in the UDO, that if you do reference a section, parking, that you go back, you put the reference tag and you reference that section so the reader can go back and do that. If a developer in Channel Park only reads the parking section, they would never know that they could do an integrated mixed-use center or, you know, multiple-use center if they only read the parking. That's why I think that it could have been, and while it can be through an amendment process, better in a general provisions document.
I mean, the problem with waiting until, you know, we go back and look at things revision session, we run the risk of just being at the mercy of what Channel Park is willing to do. So I think our person would rather take care of it now rather than...
Well, what I'm asking to take care of, we've already approved some of those things.
Well, I think signage requires a common signage plan.
Right. Right, that's already been taken care of. We don't have this specific language anywhere else. Integrated, multiple development.
If the reference to signage, parking, shared driveways was removed, it would be just then specific to...
I think so.
I mean, that seems like a doable thing.
Yeah, in the parking section, there is a short section, short allowance, that allows for just this type of development, shared parking or an alternate parking plan that we would look at and approve as part of a multiple development, multiple-use, mixed-use development. That's where I would like to see that type of language. And if we can get something here that we're comfortable with that speaks to landscaping and have that noted that, yet we want to go back to that and, one, define that, define what integrated, multiple development is in the definition section. Because even in the landscape section, they're not defining it. Have it in general provisions, have it in signage, have it in, you know, the parking, anywhere that we, that could apply to a development standard. I think we would want to note that in fact and encourage them to take a look at that. We have the goal, as it was expressed two weeks ago, to have these buffers not to be... Someone be held to that. And I think we can do that in the landscape section and clean that up. When we start talking about tree protection and parking and difference of allowances based off of a parcel-by-parcel or an integrated center, I want to look at that a little bit more before we look forward. And I just don't know if we necessarily have to do it today.
Well, Mr. Jones, I very much appreciate you sharing your concerns with such clarity. And I think your great challenge is in implementing this. And so I'm very sensitive and deferential to your concern. And I'm reluctant to edit these things on the fly because from my... The pitifully short amount of time that I've been able to pay attention to the integrated mixed-use development language, it seems to be pretty far-reaching. And you've echoed that. You've reinforced that. And, you know, you tweak some language on the fly and you're liable to create more problems along the way. So I think Channel Park clearly wants this new functionality. And I think it's a very compelling case you've made, Mr. Jones, that there are other ramifications with parking specifically. And I believe you're probably right about tree cover, among other things perhaps. So I don't know what to do, but...
Will we hear from Channel Park?
Let us hear from Channel Park.
Chuck Smith with Channel Park. As the more you talk, the more you are starting to go in directions of issues that we were considering as we got to the point where we included this. I'll say specifically, Jeff's got good points. When we bring in parking, I think the ones we bring in are parking, tree protection and signage that are outside of landscaping. And he, as he mentioned, there's a provision in the parking that lets you do a parking study to consider a larger area and a mixed-of-use area. So we felt like it would have been addressed there even though it wasn't called the same thing. Tree protection, although it's not been approved, we're still using the same concept of looking at a larger area than a site-by-site analysis of it. So that the concept was covered. And then, as I think you mentioned on the part of the sign element, requires a parcel sign plan that Penguin Place has already done for all those buildings and wouldn't change if it was, you know, subdivided into three different lots for those three buildings. So at the same time, we are happy to either delete references to those three issues until we get to the point with this annual review where we clean up other things. Or we are happy to delete it entirely if it makes Mr. Bonn's happier just because of... And I get the point of, you know, editing on the fly. So again, coming back within the annual review and just dealing with the issue. Because we do know, and I agree, Jeff has been great to work with. We, you know, I think he would say and we would say that we have a trust relationship that we have developed together. He may not always be here and I've been in other municipalities where we have dealt with this exact issue, where they have subdivided buildings within a parcel and made the applicant come back and figure out a way to deal with planting along those new property lines. So while I trust him, I may not trust the next guy or gal. And...
Well, you may trust them, but they may disagree.
They may just disagree, feel differently. And that's a good point. That's better said. So we can go, you know, any one of those three directions, whichever you prefer.
I personally think it makes a lot of sense to have a center that can function as a whole, not being divided by landscape strips in between parcels. And I think that was the goal of this type of language. So I'm still supportive of the language and I can understand Jeff's concern. I don't think really there's any concern with the signage and the parking because I think that is addressed in other places. And I don't think any of this language trumps that. But I can recognize the need to get rid of it and simply speak to landscaping. So I'm supportive of the idea and the concept that a center can act as one and let the perimeter be the landscape buffer that we're designing.
Other thoughts from the board?
I personally would feel more comfortable if our planner felt good about it. I think we're going to be living with this for the next 20 or 30 years and I'd rather be safe than sorry.
I agree with that. I concur. The planner feels that this is not what we need in this particular element. I agree with that.
Would we then have the opportunity to hear from you again two weeks from now with the language on...
Now, what we're going to do, we want to vote on this tonight if we can. So we're just going to say we're going to eliminate it right now. We'll revisit the issue when we come back with the annual review of elements.
Okay.
So that's okay.
What's your thought on that, Mr. Jones?
As I said, everything else is generally fast and good with. These are the same ideas that you've been made since then. It was just this one provision. And I think that maybe if we could have worked with Channel Park a little bit more, if it was just a holiday, we just didn't have the chance to sit down and go over it together to get to a point that we feel comfortable with it. We could have got Bennett out of this place. I think if they're willing to eliminate it and come back at a later time, I think it's fine. I would foresee any immediate need for this provision. And it's something that we know that they want and they'll see it again in the annual. And we'll be able to see it across all, you know.
All right, so can we identify which sections need to be excised?
Page two.
Page two.
Yes, but it's all together, so it's not, we're not having to go to different pages and...
So just simply the section of exemption for integrated, multiple-use development. So it spans from page two and three.
I think when it goes to other exemptions, we strike other, you know, just like...
Exemptions. Page three, unmarked up. Well, I like that solution. I'm glad we were able to come to that and I'm glad to hear that Mr. Jones is more comfortable with that. Mr. Smith, since you're back, and again, I'm grateful that you're back. Thank you.
You've never said that to me before. I'm really appreciative.
Sit you down the hallway!
That's for public consumption.
Don't tell me you don't like meat.
Oh, mystery school. So my concern over the high-quality soil language. Very, again, very glad that we now have a definition. And 3% is a definition. And I'm not going to quibble with the definition. But I continue to have discomfort with what feels like a provision to allow for, I'm just envisioning on the fly, a decision to be made to use something that might not be high-quality. But under the force of deadlines and trying to hit concrete in the ground and get a project rolling, can you reassure me that there will be no variation on that carbon percentage?
I can reassure you that this will not be a seat of the pants for the team by the fact that the references we make to licensed landscape architects, licensed landscape contractors, they put their seal on this. And they have to stand behind their seal. And they are at risk when they put their seal on something that they cannot stand behind and is not good science or good information. So that's what, that's my reassurance to you. I can't tell you that at some point in the future, there's not some material that you could add that changes that 3%, you know, changes that 3 and a half need for 3% to 2.5 or something. I can't tell you that. But the 3% was not just an arbitrary number to... If you're familiar with the sites program, that is really the new program nationally that's kind of the lead version of giving sites accreditation, that's where that number comes from. So it's good, good information. It's got a lot behind it.
Yeah. You know, I'm variously familiar with other innovative products. And the argument was made earlier that we're looking for innovation and want to be able to be open to that when it comes. And you mentioned Rice Husks and I appreciate that. That's certainly a cool opportunity where it exists regionally. And here in North Carolina, I think we make Permatil, the firmly expanded rock products.
When did that come on board?
Permatil? Wasn't that the 80s?
Yeah, but in the 70s if we were writing this, we wouldn't have... You know, that's why I'm saying we're not, I just don't want to limit it to certain things.
Purlite, vermiculite and other things. But those things, while they provide certain services to soil, they don't... They don't make up for the services that organic material provides. Sure you don't. And as rarely as those things have happened. And I don't claim to be an old fogey. I've been called a young whippersnapper. But I've studied soil science and the history of science and the soil, the history of soil science innovations. And I'm not convinced that those opportunities are going to happen very frequently.
Don't have frequently, but they will happen.
And...
And can I say, I feel good about this. I don't think you're venture to say, unless you choose to bring it up, there's not another project in Pittsburgh. It's not an issue you're going to be dealing with in your ordinance where you're requiring this sort of thing of people. I mean, we're putting this requirement on ourselves. So this is going way beyond what you typically would do in these requirements. So I feel good about it. And I feel that, I feel we've gone far enough and I feel that it's... Since it first came up and you've asked for the clarification of definitions, I think it's in a good place.
It is, it needs an admirable provision. And, you know... But it was just so surprising to me that at the same stage of defining it, the language also created an opportunity to go beyond or beside definition. And it was unsettling.
Well, as I told you outside, the point is not to come up with some provision that allows you to get around the requirement. The point is to deal with the unknown in the future and be able to cover it in an ordinance where you have to try to anticipate things like that. Sure, we'll have the opportunity annually to do things, but this catch-all is for that purpose and not to sidestep responsibility.
Thank you, Chuck. At the 3% we have in the pipeline, I'm going to have to have a landscape market that's more contracted certified next week because I'm not going to be able to go out there and look at a pile of dirt and know that.
Or you get a screen for Victoria to go out there and...
It's actually even simpler than that. You just ask for some, a test from the state lab.
Well, somebody will have to give me something that says, yes, this meets the ordinance. So as well as Victoria and I are, we're not that versed on soils and I'm not sure we will get there. So we're going to be relying on someone to certify that the soil is high-quality. And we're going to have to take that for whatever its worth. And I think if someone wanted to propose something different than a high-quality soil, we mentioned this last time, it can come back to you guys. It can be an innovative product that we all want to know because we're going to have other development other than Channel Park. As Chuck points out, it's not in our current ordinance, but it could be in our ordinance. Because everybody has to do something similar to this. So we're going to have the opportunity to look at this a little bit more further down the road. And I think this is catching what we want to see here and gives the ability for... And I think this is kind of catching what we want to see here and gives the ability for us to bring it back to you guys if they want to do something different. If we just left it that it has to be this, then I don't know where we go. We just go to the board adjustment because it's a difference of the ordinance. It's, it's a variance from the ordinance. So, we, we, we have to give some, some flexibility. But we'll, we'll keep you guys in a little bit. We'll learn more about soil as we develop this law.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. For the benefit of the public and the board, the reason for my concern on this is that this particular definition refers to provisions where areas of the development that have a very urban feel are receiving new tree plantings. And this is after, the concern that several of us share, after clear coverage, after removal of significant tree cover. Some large diameter trees, some grand trees. So, I would like to see, and I want to encourage Chatham Park in that they have done this. They have defined high quality soils, which is going to give those trees that they do plant the best opportunity to grow strongly and with some, some speed compared to using just normal Chatham County clay, you know, hardpan. So, it is definitely something that I'm enthusiastic about. I don't mean with all my questions and concerns to, to mean in any way it looks like I'm not enthusiastic about it, Chuck. I'm very much appreciative that we do have a definition and I'm very glad to know about the sites aspect.
And to that point about this urban environment and trying to get the trees to thrive, the idea that there's interconnectivity with other sections is really quite heavy. I mean, I was scratching my head about how to actually design and document that on a set of construction.
Do that, huh?
I'm getting, I'm comfortable that I can, I know exactly how to do this. And I think it's exceptionally innovative idea. Yes? I think it's fabulous.
Well, I've heard this discussion has come up before in discussions about the tree ordinance as well because especially in situations where, where lots are leveled and all the top soil is just gone. It is, it is important to have good soil where the trees don't really have much of a chance. So, I mean, I see where you're coming from exactly, especially in that situation.
Well, house soil and construction sites are valuable commodity. It doesn't usually get wasted. It gets set aside and then respread usually.
Can I, can I throw a point in? I'm a landscape contractor, 41 years. When I plant a tree for somebody, I guarantee it for one year. Okay? I'm going to add the amenities to it, okay? So that that tree lives because if it don't, I have to pay for it again. Okay? Now, there are several things, like Mr. Bonnet said, that you can add to it, but, you know, some of it you could buy from Mr. Bonnet's. I find that kind of fun. But anyway, right to what Chatham Park is planting now, if there's any dead trees, they're going to replace them. So, somebody must know something about planting a tree because they don't have no dead ones. Okay? That's one point. The other point is, we never ever had ordinance in Pittsburgh about planting a tree. We're getting carried away here, guys. Go on to something else.
Thank you. And for the record, will you please identify yourself?
Ma'am?
For the record, will you please give us your name?
Billy Hees, Hees Landscaper.
And your address?
250 West Cornwall Street.
Thank you, sir.
27312.
Thank you. Let's see, where are we now? Are we still reflecting on questions? I think you have a couple of things that this has still concerned me and maybe it's just a matter of clarification from either you or Mr. Jones. But there's just a couple of things in here that when I read them, I just would like to get some clarification. The first one is on page seven, under number three. It's about a third of the way down. If the applicable small area plan allows the undeveloped parcel to be developed under more than one land use class, it shall be assumed that this undeveloped parcel will be developed under the most intense land use class. Class one being the least intense land use class and class seven is being the most intense land use class. So, I guess my question there is, so in the event you have like a 10 acre development and you have one little piece of quarter acre or something on that land that would be ranked as intense, you know, for intent, so the entire thing becomes ranked under class seven?
Well...
The way this is worded, that's what it sounds like to me.
Well, really what we're saying is, is that when, when you are establishing these buffers on a perimeter property line and you don't know the adjacent use to you, you know from, you know, from zoning, you know, from a land use plan, what could be there? But you have to, you have to draw a line in the sand in order to make a determination on what the buffer type and width should be. The, you get clues from the land use plan or the zoning and it could include a couple of different uses. What we're saying is, we would take the worst case scenario from a use standpoint, which means we would be applying the greatest buffer along that line by doing that as opposed to choosing a lesser use that would require a lesser buffer. So, we're...
Okay, that's good. I've got that before. The second point I think is probably, I know we've talked about this before on page eight. Toward the bottom of that, under perimeter boundary transition, it talks about the owner of an adjoining property not in Chatham Park may enter into a written agreement that allows part or all the perimeter buffer required on a lot of Chatham Park PDD to be located on the adjoining property not in Chatham Park PDD. And this is probably a question for you, Mr. Jones, is how will this be documented? So, if the person that agrees to this sells their property in the future, can we rest assured that this will last, that this...
I think they'll have to have a deed restriction that goes along with it.
So, it would be on the deed?
Yeah.
Because that's important. If it's not part of the deed, then we would lose that eventually over time. So, that's really more a question of how this will be recorded.
That's how I envision it, that there's the on the deed restriction.
Do we need to be specific about that?
There, there is specific language that says that agreement will be recorded.
If you look on the previous page, we refer back to the previous page and it lays out the specifics of what the agreement has to contain.
It also has to be shown on the site plan as going to be on file with planning.
And the show approved.
Right. That shows the impact of that agreement.
And that will become a kind of enforcement issue if somebody goes out and gets a tree sale.
In your experience, does this work? Does this land remain protected?
I don't have a lot of experience where we've had, we've had, most time development, in my experience, take care of their, their buffering on their property. But not say that it couldn't happen, but something of large lots that may not develop adjacent to Chatham Park. And somebody might be willing to go into an agreement with Chatham Park that benefits them financially or what have you that says, okay, we'll, we'll encumber those 30 foot swath of land for your buffer. We're going to have an agreement with that and I'll do that.
The, the situation that we work in, that's not common, but it is common enough that, that's what we were thinking of, is that sometimes when you, let's say you build a house or you build a building and you go back and do some sort of asphalt and find out that the foundation was a foot into the buffer, into the required buffer, and then when, you know, it may not be a problem today, but if there's some sort of sale of that property, then they're trying to clean up those sort of details and we, you may have to go to the adjacent property to get that foot or that, whatever that is. And it just gives you a vehicle for being able to do that without having to come back to you guys and explain all that.
I know. I trust you more than I trust private owners as far as, you know, protecting those buffers. I just wanted to make sure. I'm curious what the penalty for would be, you know, what that would be for someone who cut down trees that were part of a buffer. Probably not very much and there might be people who get paid for it and then...
Yeah, so we would go to our, our, whatever ordinance was in effect at that time, the enforcement section and this would be enforced as long as our other ordinance is on. Civil penalties or criminal penalties, I don't know how, how we get that.
There's a state statute with respect to cutting timber that's not on your property. Is there not, Mr. Jones, or Mr. Jones?
Yes.
But I think that's like the property owner themselves. Yeah, that's, that's, it changes hands, that deed is not taken to heart, somebody wants to put in a pool, trees come down. That, that's a scenario that we may have.
And we may not even know about.
We may not, but that's where, that's our job to enforce the ordinance or the element that, that we have and the developments that are approved and built. You know, our, our jobs don't end once the CO is there. We have to always monitor stormwater devices and landscaping. All those things are just always, we're always monitoring those that are compliant.
That's the main thing, Tom.
Thank you.
I'll do know, any other questions?
I was going to get, I know Mr. VIP has got some, we've got, you know, some...
Yeah, I've got a list and I emailed it to the boards and I emailed it to you. So, we can go by them if we have time if you like.
We've made the revisions we have handed out to others.
You, you want to take us to the other?
Um, well, yeah. As I'm sitting here, I found something else, typographical type thing. So, I'll start with that one. On page three, the last paragraph, second line, I think it's a reference to more access. I think we're saying easement equals, the word easement is missing.
Yes, it is.
All right. Now, the others that I've, I've got, I think, are more exciting.
A couple of...
Yes, all of my comments are in my mind. The January 15th red line version. So, the page 15, first line says, the standards for B and C types perimeter buffers. It does not include type A, but table 3.1 includes type A, so I think you just want to add A.
Well, what we did, what, what happened there is, when we revised the table, we, we changed the buffers on freeways from a type B to a type A. Previously, it did not have any type As and we just did catch that. So, what we did, changed the language to say, except as otherwise provided here, and streetscape buffers of the width and buffer type described in table 3.1.
So, that's on page 14 and the clean...
In the handout, we gave you some of the clean version on page 14. So, that includes all the buffers from the...
Got it. So, you excluded a specific reference to B and C?
Right.
Got it. And so now we're on that table and I would like for the buffer requirements on the major thoroughfare category. Originally it said a zero buffer was required for non-residential. I would like to include non-residential, multifamily style residential, such as townhomes, apartments, condominiums, those kinds of things that can be, that want to be interactive with the tree. They want to be there pedestrian and bicycle friendly. And so, I suggested adding the words on the residential, including townhomes.
We did it just a little bit differently, but you can see.
We did the kind of the reverse where we tried to list every residential type.
Other than... That's accomplishing the goal.
So, that's one of the things, anyway, so for town values that aren't on major thoroughfares, you want them to have a buffer. So, what does that, how does that impact that?
On a major thoroughfare and all other streets, they would not, right? Yeah, but on expressways and freeways, obviously we don't want...
I think we're having residential fronting on freeways, but...
No. Nobody wants that. That's not a good market.
Sales would not be too good on that.
Let's see, what else? Page 17, I have a correction. You got, yeah, just substitute the word ACDOC for it's. You had done that in the paragraph above.
Yes, we, we've done that.
All right, the next one has to do with perimeter islands and...
That's probably page 18 or 19 or 20, somewhere in that range on the correct, on the red line.
Yeah, so 19, I, I, I think there needs to be a qualifier. Well, I'm on page 20.
20 in the correction, sorry.
Just page 20.
Yeah. So, there's this concept of these perimeter islands and the perimeter islands are required adjacent to public and private streets, but also this thing called a primary internal access drive. So, primary internal access drive onto the development, into the development.
There's a drawing of this on page 26, like drawings.
And in fact, that drawing shows two items identifying as primary internal access drives. So, one is running perpendicular to the building. And that one makes sense, that it would have this perimeter island adjacent to it as you come into a large development. But the other one is running parallel with the building and it has parking spaces adjacent to the building. And I think that oftentimes is a scenario that will happen and you want to happen. You want to be able to have parking right in front of the building. But if this perimeter island is required to be there along that driveway, then it can't happen. And so, I wanted to find a way for language to allow for that primary internal access drive not to have this requirement for landscaping between the parking, because ultimately you wouldn't have a park against the, adjacent to the building. So many of us want to pull up to the store, get out of our car, walk into a sidewalk and into the door. So, these perimeter islands would disallow that. I wanted to allow for that. Thinking also now, a, a good example that I think most of us are familiar with is Penguin Place. These perimeter islands were required at Penguin Place. Penguin Place was not a good extension. Because each of those driveways comes into the development as parking on both sides immediately. And you need to have that because it's such a small development. So, I asked for a qualifier to say, when are these islands required?
We came over two.
Okay. Okay, so less than 200 spaces, these perimeter islands are not required.
You need to look at the drawing to really, to, along with that second.
Interior island separated parking bay from primary internal access drive.
Where is that drawing? Page 26, in your red line version, figure seven, 21.
Here's, here's the, the internal access drive and I'll correct everybody. This is an interior island and it is separating this bay from this internal access drive. So, the perimeter island would not be required there. Here's the internal, here's the interior island separating this parking bay from the internal access drive. That's what we're talking about. You would, you would not also have to have a perimeter buffer. You have these, you have these interior islands. See, here's the interior, here's the interior drive. Here's a bay. Here's an internal island that's separating this bay from this interior parking drive. And so, you would not have to have a perimeter buffer because you have this internal island that's stopping the, the parking road. And so, you would not have to have a perimeter buffer unless you have this internal island that's stopping the, the parking road.
Jeff, can you show it to me?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, this internal drive right here. So, here's an interior island that's, that's separating this bay.
You know, one of the reasons we originally did this too. You'll see a number of situations where people, rather than put a plant in an island at the end of those situations, that'll paint, that'll strike. One, not as safe.
Not as attractive.
Definitely not as attractive. That's really, actually, that's probably the better.
So, Jeff, does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
Do you think, I'm worried about the ultimate interpretation says, "No, it's not a perimeter island."
Still have to, in their drawing.
To name it. Because I came up with just some language that possibly would help clarify, I think. And we'll say that when the primary internal access drive is adjacent to the building, the terminal interior island on the far side of the primary internal access drive qualifies as a perimeter island. Oftentimes, you need words. So, remove now.
You would, you would substitute that for what we have as number two down here, then?
Well, it's part, it becomes part of that. Or you're saying substituted entirely, or, or maybe everything you said. But we're basically adding the, the reference to the fact that it's a, this is the drive adjacent to the building.
Yeah, the drive adjacent to the building. That's what it's going to, I think, occur.
So, we would take your language and substitute it for what we have here. Is that what, is that what you intend?
Well, it, it wouldn't meet the, it wouldn't match with the syntax of, because you're saying it would apply except in these conditions.
What I did was just take, what I did was just take number two, and at the end of number two, after, from a primary internal access drive, when that drive is located adjacent to a building. For buildings.
Can you read it out loud?
Two, when an, when an interior island separates a parking bay from a primary internal access drive, when that drive is located adjacent to a building.
It doesn't. Yeah, it doesn't. Now, let me answer this. There's a thing called a, you've got it called a terminal island? Terminal?
It's when, it's when the interior island terminates the parking.
We have interior terminal island.
Yeah, but it does, the term, the word terminal is not included here. Is that important?
Well, the interior, is it, we, we say in there that all those types are interior islands. When it's located at the end of the, that's when we refer to it as a terminal since it was terminating the parking.
I understand. All right, I, I think that gets it where I want it. Then, the question I had was, there were two diagrams, but the red memo.
First, we had a red line through it. I just, the, the document comparison program didn't get rid of it. I'm sorry for that. I just, there won't be but one drawing in the.
It'll be on a format.
Then the last.
It's the second drawing, of course, that is relevant, not the one that has red line through it.
The one that only has one footnote.
Yes, correct.
Uh, the last thing I had was making reference on page twenty-eight, there are references to fences and walls being inside or outside of required setbacks. And there are no required setbacks in Chatham Park. Other than derive it from buffers, obviously, you can't go building.
We've got, in the small area plan, we established the required setbacks for, for the various sections. So, that happened to that point. We felt like we couldn't do it until we got to that point in the process. Couldn't do it here. And then, and then there are some property lines that will not have buff, I mean, everything will have a building setback on that line. But there will be some front lines that do not have what is called a buffer. So, that was why we referred to it as a setback.
Okay. So, we'll look to the small area plan for setbacks that get established. Okay.
Are there further questions with regard to this, this element?
I have actually one which deals with section five on page eighteen, improvements within the buffer. Eighteen. There could very easily be, I mean, I can certainly understand some exceptions for having improvements within buffers. But public and private utilities, there's a, there's a green utility box out there right now, which it blocks the sideline on Freedom Drive in such a way that you have to almost pull out in Freedom Drive out from the medical center so, before you can figure out whether there's anybody coming or not from down the hill.
We would love for us not to be there. We don't control us.
You don't.
Box that looks like a coffin.
Yes, yeah, yeah. But you're saying that under number three, under section five, you wouldn't have any control if due power or any other utility decided they need to have a big box that looks like a coffin, as Michael said, in an area which is a buffer.
Yeah, I think, well, we're, we're really referencing more than the boxes, the easements themselves, because you can't place anything in those easements. And so, we talk about how they can occur. We, we can't plant within that area. And we're talking about when they cross as opposed to if they occupy the planting area. Obviously, we have to do something different with the planting. But this is dealing with when they are crossing buffers, which will occur after buffers are planted.
After, after you.
Well, that, we, we, if we can, if we have any say so, and if we're trying to control it, the, the, the more angle that takes place away from ninety, then the more of the buffer that's disturbed. So, we're trying to limit, the more, the closer it is to ninety, the less impact there is in the buffer. The more it starts doing this, the more the impact. So, that's why we refer to the sound of the degrees. This is the right point.
Is anybody else positive on that?
Okay, I'll just reread it again.
Yeah.
Also with respect to number four, on the next page, this management practice.
Something I think that makes improvements within the buffers, you know, you're talking about the public utilities, how it says in part B, that it does make up for, it sounds like Secroke replaced with an equal amount of buffer area, meaning the buffer standard in proximity to the disturbed area. It sounds like it compensates.
And with the BMPs, it's dealing, we specifically mentioned the BMPs that are planted. So, there will be plant material when those are located.
Thank you. Uh, for the question. Is there a motion with respect to what this would entail at this point, I expect, with the, the deletions that have been made under I load on pages two and three, and then the specific corrections that were made in response to Michael Fiocca's questions?
Making motion to approve that those applications mentioned.
There are second Michael's motion, second. Approved by Michael Fiocca, seconded by Colonel Baldwin, Madison family, please. If you can take that thing, aye?
Aye.
That's close. Special consideration. It is nine twenty-five. And our next agenda item is, uh, is for me to speak on climate change. Um, I guess I am remembering that our last meeting went until almost midnight. And I would be glad to either put this to a next meeting or go ahead and, however.
Sounds like it's going to be a long presentation.
Well, it's not.
Hello, still forward.
I'd like to take a damn five minute break. We got a twenty-five minute presentation.
Move aside, Jake, there. Hold on a second if I. Second, are you?
Where's the test? Okay.
Very good.
My side. Everybody was afraid to have jacklairs that walked through the screen. And our heads are right there. Bear had, you're like, ate all his jacklairs. We didn't have a water buffer, so we had to take that type one. They're dry around the house, but never bothering anyone.
It's good for food.
Well, during our five minute break, it ended up being a little bit longer. We decided to postpone the second item of old business, which was going to be my talk on the climate change summit. And so, we'll put that on the agenda early next, uh, next meeting.
A question before we depart from that.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, the Chicago Charter, is that something that you would like to bring for us at future meetings?
Well, and, and it will be sent because we signed that at, um.
Very good.
At the Tuesday meeting. And, and it will be, it's on your, yeah, it, it's on your desk as a draft, but the actual thing has now been signed. And we had the option of, the first page was talking about the global covenant and the Paris Agreement. And all, all mayors who were there did the first item, which was the general provision. Then the second item, uh, if you've got attached, there are specific commitments of individual mayors under the Chicago Charter. And, and so, they sent us a note ahead of time and asked us to approve of those that we felt were important for our town. And so, um, so we opted, I opted to do A through F, um, thinking about all of our discussions of tree canopies and vegetative areas and renewable energy and policies to eliminate carbon footprint in the public transit system. I just, I felt like they were all things of importance to us. And then this page is the one out of the Chatham County inventory. And, and it simply shockingly shows the idea that seventy-eight percent of the carbon emissions, emissions in the two thousand fifteen inventories were as a result of transportation. And that is just absolutely astounding. Of course, knowing that we're such a rural county, also, you know, and knowing that sixty-five percent of our people leave the county every day to go to work is, makes it somewhat more understandable.
What is this one say right there?
That's transportation. It was seventy-eight point five percent of them.
I'd be interested to see what is included in transportation.
Okay. Well, and the, the whole document, which is about seventeen pages, the inventory is available online at the Chatham County website. So, uh, but that inventory was, was done by university students. And one of the things that, that we talked about in Chicago was the idea that if you've got a university nearby, you need to take advantage of those people who want to do things like this inventory, want to do things like interning to help with climate. And it was, um, it was very appealing to think that we had so many resources surrounding us and that we need to take advantage of. So, that brings us to managers update, I am respect.
Thanks again, Madam Mayor. Actually, you have a, you have a PowerPoint in front of you. I won't go point by point. But I do wanna mention a couple of things that I don't have written in there that I think you guys might hear about or might be of interest to you. And before I get, so before I get too far into it, and actually Commissioner Wilson probably might be somewhat aware of it already, but apparently, Paul Place Development Company is going to be convening a public workshop on a project, a multi-use, not multi-use, excuse me, multi-family apartment project that they'll have as part of their development. It's on January twenty-fifth.
It's on a Thursday at six thirty.
Yeah, six thirty at Chatham Park office. So, I can forward you the information that we have on that if you'd like.
And that, that was a lot of Michigan's time. I took them into the city. It was okay to invite everyone. They said they loved it, so.
Two hundred and thirty-four minutes?
I think it's two thirty-four. Um, I think, I have that to talk about in my conference, but there's been a huge amount of interest from the community. And people are mostly worried about the traffic. Because I've talked about before, the traffic on Millbrook is really treacherous. And so, adding this number of apartments to that already crazy street, people.
Is that, is that Millbrook on the left?
Yeah. It's real narrow.
Yeah, that's coming to the, to the right. I'll watch it about that.
So, the, the only other thing I wanna add about that, just for your information, if you are asked about it from the public. We haven't received any formal application. Staff has not received formal application yet. So, this is, this is as much detail as I've seen on it ever.
Is that, can I get a copy of that?
Sure, yeah. I, if, if it's okay, I'll just forward the email that I have that Mr. Jones forwarded to me. So, it has this attachment on it.
Because I'm definitely gonna go to the meeting. And I've already had conversations about the community chat.
What time is that? Six thirty, too?
Six thirty. And people are also concerned about buffers. And because the ordinance is not required that much, they're hoping that the availability will be rewarded. Yes, the old, people were expecting state family homes to have a buffer. They weren't expecting. People are really working on that.
What's that date?
Thursday.
This?
And, uh, next, next week, I'll be attending my, my winter conference, the North Carolina City County Managers Association Winter Conference in Winston-Salem. Unfortunately, this year, it's in Winston-Salem. It's always been in Durham, which allowed me to only attend part of it that was immediately adjacent to a committee that I serve on this time around. I'm a little bit more involved with that committee. So, I'm gonna attend a little bit more of the conference. So, I'll be gone Wednesday, beginning about Wednesday afternoon to the morning of Friday, February second. So, it's one of those extra weeks. So, we're not gonna have an agenda that week. But if anybody, I'll be out of the office then. But if anybody has any questions or anything comes up, you know, feel free to contact.
Congratulations.
The, I guess the only other things that I would, that I would add as far as the, as far as the report is concerned is that with regard to the weather, we received a number, I would say a number of, we received some questions. I had a couple of emails, actually, from people outside of the town asking if we plow and what's the, the town's policy on plowing. And I thought that was really interesting for a couple of different reasons. And I thought that was really interesting for a couple of different reasons. You know, first of all, they, it's kind of the age-old issue of if they have a Pittsburgh mailing address, they feel that they're inside of the town of Pittsburgh. Um, and, and people aren't always clear on who does what. And so I, you know, that's, that's fine. You guys probably receive a bit of that sort of general thing over the years. The other thing that that, I think is interesting to me about it is that I think it says that we're doing, I think, more in town as far as plowing than maybe some of the off, uh, some of the off-roads are, uh, out on the state roads. So in other words, there's a lot of, a lot of residents, a lot of residential communities out in the county that maybe aren't getting plowed at all, whereas they come into town and they see that we're plowing our side streets and doing some things like that that I think that the citizens have come to expect here. So I think that's, that's good and bad. It's, it's good in that, that we're doing what our citizens are starting to expect. It's bad in that I think a lot of people outside of town feel like they should be receiving the same level of service. And then they, you know, they, they might call me or they might call you and say, hey, why aren't they plowing my street? So, um, I guess it's just important for us all to, to realize and, uh, and keep that in mind. And so it's, you know, it's unfortunate they don't get that level of service. But I think every year we've done a little bit better on, on the winter events. This was certainly a, a type of snow that I'm a little bit more used to in, in that it was heavier, uh, and fluffier and a lot easier to move. We did, weren't able to move all of it before it froze onto the streets. And, um, so it was kind of problematic in that way. And certainly we had some, some cancellations and, and things that, that we, I would have liked to avoid, avoided. But I think the good news is, is, uh, by and large, everybody in town was safe and, and I think handled it pretty well. So, um, if you do have any input or, or, uh, feedback on that, please let me know. And again, just to reiterate, we do focus on intersections, shady areas of town, the dizzier town streets before we hit some of the lesser travel residential streets. And that's just kind of our simplified focus on.
I've heard nothing but positive things about Pittsburgh handling for the Senate.
Well, and, and I was trying to screen capture. I, I was, I was watching a lot of Ariel over this last week and they, they had a reporter in town and they mentioned specifically in town, town crews are doing a good job. I wish they could have captured that.
I think a lot of people don't realize there's no such thing as a county road. It's either town or state.
Yeah, and in Michigan, that's exactly the way it is. And so I don't know if maybe some of the northerners think that those.
Yeah.
It's either, it's either state or town, you know? And so we don't do, uh, we don't have a lot to do with sixty-four and with fifteen-five oh-one, except in the downtown area. We will do a little bit more maybe in the downtown, particularly around the, the angle parking areas and sites. Some, sometimes on the sidewalks. We don't do anything on sidewalks. It wouldn't surprise me at some point in time that, you know, as we get bigger, that we'll see people calling for that. And it's like I tell staff, it, anytime you set the level here, you know, as far as plowing goes, the public now will want that level up here. And that's why, I mean, that's kind of one of those good problems, but.
Yeah.
I think, I think they did a great job.
Yeah. I will definitely pass that along.
Yeah.
I think if people complain about the lack of, uh, uh, plowing, that we should ask them if they'd like to, if they'd mind if we raised their tax to plow. You know, that's, that's definitely they know.
I, I get one email every year from, uh, there's a resident, you probably know who he is, lives in Chatham Forest. It's, it's how I know it's been snowing. So, uh, and I answered him again this year and said, thank you.
Some people don't want you to soak it up. They want to feel like you enjoyed it. Take off.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was sort of hoping that we had closed Circle Drive or, uh, Salisbury, uh, West Salisbury.
Yeah, but didn't let it.
Did the, uh, did the chief close any of the roads so that children could sled? Do you know, Troy?
No, I don't, I don't think we like closed any roads for, to open them up for sledding. I, I, actually, I don't think this kind of type of snow this past time, you know, really allowed for, for any good sledding anyway.
Oh, yeah. See, in my neighborhood, sure, we're having.
There's a very grassy area in.
Not, not like, not like in past notes is what I'm, is what I mean.
Yeah, it's, you, you know, in my official capacity, I gotta kind of, I mean, steer people away from sledding on streets. So, I don't know, it's kind of, I know, I know.
When I was in, when I was in Salisbury, and it was so much fun, like somebody come and go fire. So much fun.
I think the one other thing on, on my report that I would, that I would mention is with regard to retreat, um, the, uh, I did, I did manage to connect with Mr. Wong, David Wong, who's done it the past few years. He's, he fell off the roof of his garage. And so he may receive medical clearance in time for complaints. In fact, he probably will, but, uh, I'd like to consider a backup plan. And so, second, I wanted to verify the location of where we were holding.
So we're not on the night thing for a retreat then?
Yeah, we're, I, that's still, still, keep that penciled in. I just wanna find an, an MC, uh, make sure that we have someone that.
I'll make whoever's the check.
So I'll, I'll circle back with that.
John, check then.
Well, I, I must admit, I prefer to stay in town. I mean, I don't have any objection. Up here or up to the county. I think we had it a lot of the time.
So. I don't want it being here in the town, the library.
The egg center.
Yeah, maybe the egg center. I'm, I'm thinking fresh ground. I think Mayor Perry was usually suggesting.
Didn't have to be.
I like the idea that the farm simply because, um, uh, we should need lots of goat cheese.
Bring the goat cheese here. We got those last year.
Should we try the egg building?
Uh, we can find out if it's available.
Do we have a second? As soon as Mr. Wong fell off the roof?
I'll talk to the school of government and see if they might have somebody available on that day.
It'd be interesting to ask somebody different, just to get a different perspective.
Yeah.
So he, yeah, I, I said, he, uh, yeah, I feel bad. On the other hand, I don't want to force him to.
Yeah.
So, we'll, we'll see. I, let me see what I can come up with at the school of government and I'll let you guys know. Jay can email, that's all right. And I guess with that, I turn it over to you.
We have Commissioner concerns, Jane girl.
Just to echo the, uh, I had several things coming in the restaurant, uh, thanking the town and what a good job Police Department and utilities did on the streets. And, and some of us old timers do remember the times when, uh, Salisbury and the street up above my house was, uh, closed off for days and days. And they remember that too. But it, everybody did a good job. I saw some of the guys out late at night. Really do appreciate it. I don't have anybody else.
So I just want to follow up with the talk about the apartments. I was gonna talk about that we've already covered up. But Mr. Bruce, do we have any idea when that's gonna come before?
Yeah, I don't. Like I, I said, I mean, we probably will get more of an idea actually, to be honest with you, on Thursday, unless Jeff knows something that I'm not aware of.
Uh, I've got a notice from someone who was concerned about the trash cans that are just left on the, on fifteen-five oh-one when you go out of town, uh, that little stretch between, um, downtown Pittsburgh and Powell Place. That there are, there's a lot of trash cans that are just being left at the highway all the time. And it's obviously very unattractive. Right, so I'll throw that out.
This, this section, the thirty-five mile, then transitioning to forty-five mile process section?
I think it's on the left-hand side of the road toward Chapelville. On the left-hand side is, uh, in case of people that don't ever take the trash can out.
Yeah, those houses are up a pretty steep hill.
I know, I know.
It's dirt road.
And it's for older people.
I have wondered if, if we ought not try to put a placeholder in that for conversations with DOT as the project unfolds. Because as that is planned, I think, um, I don't know what the complexities would entail. Of course, the property owners would have to approve and we'd have to deal with the, the right of way. But, um, it seems like, uh, there ought to be a possibility of having a small enclosure built, perhaps at, at owner's expense, but some means to make that appear more attractive.
It's definitely what I ordered to say about. Anyway.
I don't, I don't.
Well, because the utility trucks, I mean, the trash trucks don't go up to, for the small driveway, private road kinds of places like Dark Oaks, um, they, they have to be at the, that spot. Yeah. And, and you may say that, some of you may say that they should be collected back, but, you know, like you said, John, there's a number of elderly people that live in that area. I'm not sure.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
How about saying about building a.
I do have a screen, a screen is perfectly helpful in my mind. And then if they could bring it out, pass that to the road. Anyway, okay.
That, that is what it is, is going up that hill, pulling those things up the hill.
That big block.
Then it's further up, it's even higher than that part. Yeah, it would be good if it was something, sometimes.
It's a screen.
I've been thinking a lot about that stretch of road.
Waste management, because I don't know that them guys get out of their truck to touch their.
They would have to bring them.
I hope the resident could haul it out from behind the screen.
Oh, but.
I tried to. But I've been thinking about that stretch of road a lot recently and, and, um, wondering, um. You had a meeting, you said with Jeff and DOT, um, and did we get any insights into that project? I keep hearing twenty nineteen, are we still here in twenty nineteen?
Uh, we didn't address, um, that section, which is going from low to some improvement now.
Okay. I mean, there's just a lot of questions in my mind once that project unfolds. Like, uh, I understand that there's to be sidewalks on both sides. And, um, I wonder if the speed limit can be changed for the entire length of the road. It's thirty-five, getting roughly halfway. And, um, yeah, just, I just have a whole lot surrounding questions. And so, uh, Mr. Bruce Beck, I'm, I'm curious if there is a process to start the conversation with DOT? Or when will they initiate that?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. We can follow up and, and see where they're at with that. But they, as you said before, hasn't changed to my knowledge. So a lot of, a lot of those issues, um, can be addressed not only at the planning process, staff and DOT level, but I mean, I think, I think also too, they're required or will be holding at least one public hearing on the project before it begins. So, um, you know, so the, the public at large will have an opportunity to comment on it even after we, so.
Well, I think in order to increase some sense of continuity between these developments just north of, uh, the bypass and the town as it begins kind of around the Old Mill, uh, I, I'd, I'd really love it if, if this board could maybe engineer some kind of additional public, uh, expression opportunities or public information opportunities sooner than later. I mean, twenty nineteen is gonna be here in just a time at all. So, just seems a very important conduit, a very important, um, section. And, and I love what I'm hearing. I just want to make sure that we get as many voices of concern, if there are concerns, uh, expressed sooner than later.
I don't know if they were necessarily concerned other than they definitely want the sidewalk.
Yeah, folks want those sidewalks. They've been promised for decades.
That's right, the bike lane. We pushed for that a long time.
Cause always people walk on that street.
Yeah, dangerous, dangerous. Danger, and I would like to be a walk, be a, to walk to Northwood. For downtown, in fact, ride their bikes. But it, it's too dangerous.
But I just don't know how you're gonna squeeze all that into that, you know, stretch. And that's why I think there will be concerns, because I think it's, because rough drawings begin to be shown. We're gonna need to think this through and I'm sure there'll be rights of way issues and.
These people do have big, most people have.
Yeah, might have. I mean, that little white cinder block house, the duplex there, so. Yes. Which is worth a while.
We need to talk to your D about, about the actuality. But, you know, right on the opposite side of Alice's Road, uh, Alice's House is, um, there, it might look like there's a, um, a, a good distance there in the yard at Billy Joe and. Patterson's house, but their sewer line runs right through there. So what does DOT do? Do they look to us to relocate the sewer line or do they have to do it themselves?
They do. They, they do it if we, you know, as always, if it's a betterment, as they'd say, then we would be responsible for it. For example, these sidewalks and bike lanes, they're not paying for it. So, I mean, we're gonna have to budget that in somehow. But we, we kind of threw in at, at, at the board, at the time, board's input on that was, uh, you know, include all, all modes, make it as complete of a street as possible. So, we asked that those, the bike lanes on both sides and sidewalks on both sides didn't really.
I think that's a good thing we could have brought, which is more interesting. But during this, um, I put a post on the town Facebook page inviting people to send in their snow photos. And it's a good thing I wasn't working that day, because all day long I was getting photographs, which took some time to upload and, and, uh, it turned out to be so sweet. There was over a hundred photographs of, of different people enjoying the snow, what their yards looked like. And people really got into it. Um, people, a couple of people sent videos, um, and in all, it ended up being seventeen thousand views on the snow. Look, I think it was a really nice, um, kind of PR thing. Some people didn't, that sent photos were outside, it's adversity, but, but, uh, still, it's kind of sweet. People really got into it. And then while they were there, they were working another day on the town page and so, um.
Wonderful.
It was very sweet. If you get a chance to visit the town, there's, there's one of the towns plowing the streets and somebody's done it. They've been out there all day, uh, but people with dogs and it was quite sweet.
Thank you so much, Heather. I really appreciate you doing that.
Well, I just want to echo Senator Little's work about the job well done on the snow. And I did see a few folks out there late at night, early in the morning. It seemed like every time I was outdoors, there were crews pumping it. So, uh, thank you, appreciate it. And then I've got one question. I know we had an email exchange going on. And one of the questions, um, I had outstanding, uh, was whether or not we have actual software to do the hydraulic modeling of our water system. I know we were getting the GIS data from hydrostructures and it seemed, I can't recall whether or not we actually have the data to, or the, the software to use the data to do modeling of our system.
I'll find out.
Okay. Cause it, quite frankly, I think it might be something we want to invest in if we don't have it.
No, I've already made it, okay? John, anything else?
No, I just want to also chime in with great gratitude and, uh, hearing of a couple of cases of folks who were really struggling with health issues and, and, um, folks who were shut in, uh, I just really appreciate. I know staff made extra efforts on it. And I wrote an email with the last snow and, uh, I think I'll do that again. Brian, are you able to share that with staff?
I'm sorry.
Are you able to share with?
Yo, yes, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, I've, I've, they're gonna let this go to their head.
But it's fine. I mean, it's, you know, when it, when it's that bitter cold and, and you gotta get yourself up out of bed, I think it's.
Absolutely. You don't get a knock out of boys.
Let it go to their head. And I'll, I'll send another thank you and please do forward more.
And I'll, I'll send another thank you and please do forward more.
And the doubt that the Dallas, like, if this firm was able to take these risks, they would shoot down.
I, I haul trash in the snow, so I understand.
Well, and, and the snow wasn't going to anything. Um, everybody at the mill apparently, uh, got the slew and passed it around and, uh, except for Paul Horn, was that correct? Um, but I was talking to Victoria and she said it was like, it just ripped through the entire group up there. And there were a few people down here that were, uh, in this office that were not particularly well, but, uh, but it's, uh, uh, there was a lot to get through besides just the snow. And, um, and yet Friday evening, uh, leaning against my front door with the package and it wasn't that wonderful.
You had it, you expected it to be there.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, it's...
Moved by Betwell Controlling.
Certainly.
Taken by John Bond, it says the favor. He is in.